All right. Good morning, everybody. It is 9:00 AM. I will call the meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is posted by the entrance to the room for public review at any point. At 9:15, we will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended. First order of business this morning is to open with prayer, and if everybody would please join me. Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We come before you humbly, asking for your continued blessings with rain. Lord, we ask that you just lift up, we lift up our first responders, our firefighters, our volunteer firefighters. We ask that you just keep them in your arms of protection, Lord. We lift up the Moody family before you. Help provide them peace as they struggle with the loss of a loved one who gave his life fighting the fires up north. Lord, we ask that you bless these proceedings today. We ask for a touch of your wisdom, your discernment, your temperance, as we deliberate and make decisions for the people that we represent here in Lincoln County. Lord, guide these proceedings and allow the work to be done in a way that is pleasing to your eye. We pray all these things in your heavenly name. Amen. Next order of business is to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting that was held on October 3rd, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held October 3rd, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Ruler, second by Woodruff. Any further discussion or corrections? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Ruler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye. Next order of business is claims and treasures receipts.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the claims and treasures receipts as presented.
Second. Motion by Woodruff, second by Weems. Any further discussion?
Question, the law enforcement contract with the village of Sutherland, is that a yearly payment that they make?
Twice a year, April and October.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye. Next order of business is receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county clerk.
Chairman, I'd move that we receive an order filed, the fee report from the county clerk.
Second.
Motion by Hugley, second by Ruler. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hugley.
Go ahead.
Ruler.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye. Next order of business is an interlocal agreement with the village of Wealthy for snow removal and grading of streets within the village. This is essentially a renewal, minor language alterations. The village would like this to go on in perpetuity unless the county or the village requests change. Believe it's $92 an hour.
For a maximum of 50 hours.
Correct. And I backed the termination timeline down from 90 days to 30 days, so that if we do want to renegotiate that rate in the future.
We don't have to wait a full quarter.
Right.
I'm sure you reviewed it, but can we approve contracts in perpetuity?
That's not a contract, that's interlocal. And I didn't see anything in the interlocal cooperation act that didn't say we could.
That's my question, good enough, my friend. Thank you.
Because I specifically looked that up.
Thank you. So we're okay to go ahead, eh?
I believe so. If I find something different, you'll have a new one to sign.
Just going to tag you to death, Jason, for time. Handle this. You can handle this.
It's convenient when you have a road crew member up and we're down in that area, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement with the village of Wealthy for snow removal and grading on the streets of family village.
Second.
Motion by Woodruff.
And do have the chairman sign such agreement.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Ruler. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye. Next order of business is a special designated liquor permit submitted by Old Depot Vineyard and Winery for a private party to be held at the winery on November 10th, 2022.
Disregard. Next order of business is actually an interlocal agreement with the city of North Platte for dispatch services.
We're just going to gloss you over that, right?
Keep it up.
The chief's even here.
I'm human.
Ken's going to get himself elected chairman next year.
For the rest of the term.
We don't, we don't need hecklers in the crowd when we have one regular.
Exactly.
That's right.
Okay, so this is one that was tabled two weeks ago. It'll leave Commissioner Hugley wanted to have further conversation on it.
I, the sheriff, the chief deputy, myself, and the chief Reeves met. I think that the agreement that we have before us is certainly a fair and equitable agreement. In fact, if it's a motion's in order, I would make a motion that we enter into an interlocal agreement with the city of North Platte for dispatch services and is it possible?
Yes.
Okay, period.
Faggot. Motion by Hugley, second by Weems. Any further discussion on this?
Thanks to the chief for the good background on this information. That was helpful.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
I don't think that it was appropriate to confuse it with so many facts, though.
I know. Our story was better, right? Before we got numbers.
Worked for me. You know, while we're on that subject, chief and sheriff, no, you're okay. Just wondering if you had any other, between the two of you, a chance to have a dialogue about maybe some of the services we talked about, Sheriff, if that would be appropriate to take one or two. I think that'd be probably a conversation that'd be better just for you two, but I was curious.
Okay, now moving on to the special designated liquor permit submitted by Old Depot Vineyard and Winery for a private party to be held at the winery on November 10th, 2022. Have anybody?
They have a catering license, so no one needs to appear according to our resolution.
Not the first time they've done this.
The sheriff didn't object, I take it. Don't hear him raising his hand. Didn't object.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the special designated liquor permit submitted by Old Depot Vineyard and Winery for a private party to be held at the winery on November 10th, 2022.
Motion by Woodruff.
And authorize him to sign.
And authorize the chairman to sign if he saw what he's.
Second. Motion by Woodruff, second by Weems. Further discussion? Just for reference, they did submit the fee check. Roll call vote, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
This is in my house.
Really?
If I had to, I'd walk.
This first thing? Nine o'clock? I'm sorry.
We had to help fold it up.
I signed that hesitantly. Yeah. Next order of business is adoption of resolution number 2022-26, authorizing the chairman to sign the county annual certification of program compliance. This is with the Department of Transportation.
Chairman, I'd make a motion that we adopt resolution number 2022-26, authorizing the chairman to sign the county annual certification of program compliance.
Second. Motion by Hugley, second by Weems. Any further discussion?
Are there any requirements for specific actions that have been taken and done? Nothing on.
Any further discussion?
From the record, it looks like we have to authorize the chairman to sign.
Okay, yeah, it was in.
The gentleman needs a motion, I didn't hear it. It was in the language. Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, is it your duty to explain the donut protocol to first time reporters?
I'll let you go. I'll do that, too. Take care, gentlemen.
You might have explained it better if you did that.
I think that got turned on you. Good morning, Judy.
How do you know?
It was pretty quickly, so.
All right, it is 9:15. We will now recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization. Again, we will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is posted by the entrance to the room for public review at any point. First order of business is to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting that was held October 3rd, 2022.
Chairman, I'd move to approve those minutes regarding the Board of Equalization meeting that was held 10/3 of 22.
Motion by Weems.
Second.
Second by Woodruff. Any further discussion or corrections?
Beat you to the punch.
Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley. Ruler.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye. Next order of business is certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor.
Get me today. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, Angie Forbes, representing the county assessor's office this morning.
Looks like we have a few today.
A couple, I think. I'm winging it here, guys, so just ask them questions and I'll see what I can do.
Okay.
Okay.
So, first one is for Stephen and Stacy Dawkins.
Yeah. That one, two deeds must have came in at the same time, but we didn't get it split off when those deeds came in, and for mortgage purposes, we needed to split off these acres so that his taxes can be taken care of, is kind of what that happened in that one.
Looks like 31.63 acres needed split off.
Yep. And it's gonna, it's all the same value and everything, just we needed to get it split for the mortgage people to take care of the taxes, so.
So we're deducting $673.60 from one and adding it to the other?
Yes.
Okay, simple enough.
Yes.
You said there's two of them?
That's, that's both of them.
Well, that's the.
Yeah, the same, yeah, the same one, taking it from the one and putting it to its own card, yeah.
Chairman, I'd move to approve the certificates of correction and refund submitted by the county assessor.
Motion by Weems.
Second.
Second by Ruler. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye. Okay. I'll be back up here in a second.
Okay.
Next order of business is motor vehicle tax exemption application is submitted by the county treasurer. Looks like we have one this morning.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the application for exemption for motor vehicles funded by the North Platte Catholic schools. It's for a 2014 Dodge Caravan, used for educational purposes and recommended for approval by Deputy County Treasurer, Sharon Newton.
Motion by Hugley.
Second.
Second by Weems. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hugley. Weems.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye. Okay, next order of business is notice of valuation change is submitted by the county assessor. Good morning again.
Hello.
Okay, so we have one parcel, number 36581.00. What's this for?
This is for the building over at 1118 West Fifth Street. It was owned by the Salvation Army, which was a exempt property. They sold before levy date to a non-exempt property, so therefore we have to put it back on.
Okay, so land improvements going from zero to a total of $314,482, correct?
Yep.
I do have a question. Willow Investments LLC, are they located at 1118 West Fifth?
I'm gonna say that's where we're gonna mail their stuff.
And so the property was also at 1118 West Fifth, or was it located somewhere else?
Oh, no.
One of Salvation.
1118 West Eighteenth.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. They got, yeah, Pat, Pat made an error right there.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Parcel number's correct, though.
We got, no, 1121 West Eighteenth. What are they doing here?
Okay.
So it's the parcel number, right?
Oh, yeah, the parcel number's correct. The address that we're gonna mail the stuff to the people is 1118 West Fifth. So that's their mailing address for Willow Investments.
So the parcel, just for clarification.
The parcel is 36581.00, Salvation Army, First Reed, Lot 1. 1121 West Eighteenth is the address.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the valuation change as submitted by the county assessor's office on parcel 36581.00.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Weems. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Go ahead.
Weems.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Good job, Angie.
You did great. That makes more sense.
Yeah. That was confusing.
Okay, is there anything else to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization? Hearing none, we will adjourn as Lincoln County Board of Equalization at 9:22 AM and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, is it possible for me to relay a comment from the county constituent regarding our road department?
Sure.
Jason, this is a compliment to you and your road construction crew. There's a gentleman that was a little skeptical about the looks of a road when he saw it finished. But at the end of corn harvest, silage harvest season, the road held up much better than he ever imagined. And he said that you and your road construction crew need a huge round of thank you. So pass that on to your crew, please.
I will. I appreciate it.
Said he'd stop by and talk to you in the office, but he's a busy man, so he may not get there, so I wanted you to know that.
Appreciate it.
He also supplied you with some water. You probably know who it is then.
Okay, it is 9:25. We will move on to our 9:25 agenda item, which has multiple points on it. First, to discuss and consider the following for Lincoln County Planning Commission. The reappointments of Rod Rayburn, Linda Hanson, Mitch Moorhead, and Roger Merritt for three-year terms to the Lincoln County Planning Commission. Judy, would you like to come forward? Good morning, Judy.
Good morning, Judy.
Good morning, Judy.
Judy Clark, Planning Administrator. I just submitted some names for you. I did contact all of the reappointments to see if they were still interested in serving. I think we have a pretty good Planning Commission board in place, so their job is to make recommendations to you all to consider whatever happens to be in front of them at the time. I really don't have a lot to say. If you have any questions, happy to.
I'm really appreciative of their work and glad that they're willing to stay on the commission. I concur with your assessment. Judy, you've got a great group there, so with that, I would, I would offer a motion to reappoint Mr. Rod Rayburn, Ms. Linda Hanson, Mr. Mitch Moorhead, and Mr. Roger Merritt for three-year terms to the Lincoln County Planning Commission.
Second.
Motion by Weems, second by Woodruff. Any further discussion on the reappointments? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Brunt.
Aye.
Okay.
The only, the only other thing I could mention is I certainly concur with Kent, and I'm sure the chairman on behalf of this room would like you to relay that to the board.
Yes, absolutely. Next item on this topic is the appointment of Judy Peterson to the Lincoln County Planning Commission to finish Brad Stickelman's three-year term, which will be up in twenty twenty-four.
Is there a particular reason for the Brad stepping down?
Um, Brad has served, and I wish I remembered the exact number, but I believe it's about twenty-two years on the Planning Commission. And he just, I don't know, he just decided it was time to let somebody else have an opportunity, so there was no hardship, heartburn, anything like that. He just said, "I've been there for over twenty years, and it's just time to let somebody else have the option of doing that," so.
Sounds great.
Yep.
And, and did we try to replace him with somebody from like a similar area or explain that, what that individual, where.
What I generally try to do, and yes, Brad Stickelman actually was from North Platte, so his address is North Platte, so yes. The two that I am putting forward to replace are two North Platte individuals. Judy Peterson, of course, is south of North Platte. The next one is actually in North Platte. What I try to do is get a pretty decent combination. Right now, we have one from Hershey, two from Brady, one from, with the reappointment, one from Wellfleet, and then several from north of North Platte, several from south of North Platte, and then a couple that actually reside in North Platte. It's really difficult to get individuals from, you know, Hershey, Sutherland, Brady, Maxwell areas, simply because, you know, it's, it's not a paid job. And so, the only thing they do get is mileage if they do do that, so, you know, it's, it's not a real big incentive to get those individuals interested.
Correct, and Joe, I did sit in on the interviews with both Judy and Aaron, and this was discussed. And Judy's always mindful of that effort, but as she says, it's difficult to find people that will serve. She found two, well, three actually with the alternate coming up, but good people that civic-minded and were pleased that they stepped forward, correct?
Yep, I would agree.
I've known Judy for a long time. She'll do a great job and bring a lot of energy to the, to your table and.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we appoint Judy Peterson to finish Brad Stickelman's three-year term. She said it will be up for reappointment in twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion by Ruler, second by Hugley. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brunt.
Aye.
Next point on this topic is the appointment of Erin Edwards to the Lincoln County Planning Commission to finish Steve Cook's three-year term, which will be up in twenty twenty-three.
Again, just, you know, somebody that Kent and I kind of felt had some knowledge of what the county is all about. And when it comes to subdivisions, those types of things, I think he'll bring some decent information to the table, so.
Yeah, he'll bring a lot of energy too and good background and things. As long as his background investigation comes out okay, we're fine.
We say that tongue-in-cheek for the audience, because most bad words is in the audience.
I was very pleased that Erin stepped forward as well to show interest in this. He'll bring a lot to the, to the commission, I think. And thank you for coming forward, stepping off here to serve.
No, all you gotta do is finish with the motion.
Yeah, exactly. And we move to appoint Erin Edwards to the Lincoln County Planning Commission to finish Steve Cook's three-year term, which will be up in twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by Weems, second by Hugley. Further discussion?
I'd also like to note for the record, thank Mr. Cook as well for his many, many years on the commission.
Hearing no further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brunt.
Aye.
Erin, you didn't come back out, did you?
Not yet.
Okay.
You will do just fine, Erin.
And last point on this topic is the appointment of Russ Miller as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment.
So, the Board of Adjustment is a pretty interesting group. We don't meet unless there is an issue. Variances to setbacks, variances to buildings, those types of things. So, Russ Miller had originally asked to be part of the Planning Commission, and I spoke with him. I think he also can bring a lot of knowledge and background. I think he's a very critical thinker. So, we just decided to, since we did have another opening, to go ahead and appoint him on the Board of Adjustment. And he is hoping that, you know, we will have somebody that if somebody else does eventually, you know, resign or decide they don't want to be reappointed, we have somebody that is very willing to step into that role also. And he's from the Hershey area, so that gives us another.
Yeah, I wondered where you were going. You started out, and this is a pretty interesting group, but.
It, it never meets. The Board of Adjustment actually takes a lot of critical thinking, because if the Board of Adjustment decides no on a topic, it is appealed directly to district court. So, you really need some critical thinkers on that board if there is ever an issue, because that doesn't come back to you guys. That just goes straight to district court, and so we've got to make sure we have our ducks in a row with that one, so.
It's an important seat to hold.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we appoint Russ Miller as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment.
Motion by Woodruff.
Second.
Second by Ruler. Any further discussion on this? I would just like to say thank you to all the individuals on here, those that have tenure on the Planning Commission, those that are stepping forward and bringing valuable experience and fresh insight to the commission as well as the Board of Adjustment. We're blessed here in Lincoln County to have great civic-minded people willing to participate and carry on the work of the county, so. And thank you to you and your team as well.
Thank you, Judy.
Thanks, Judy. Thanks, Erin.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Brunt.
Aye.
All right, all set members are appointed. Moving on to our nine-thirty agenda item. Public hearing to receive comments with respect to the requested vacation or abandonment of part of a public road known as Somerset Road, located in the east half of southwest corner, section twenty-six, township ten N, range thirty-one west of the sixth PM, and in part of the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter of section twenty-six, township ten North, range thirty-one west of the sixth PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska. It is nine thirty-five. I will open up the public hearing to receive public comment. Give it a few more seconds. Saying nobody stepped forward to provide public comment. I will close the public hearing at nine thirty-six AM. Moving on to the next point on this agenda item, which is discuss and consider adoption of resolution for vacation following the public hearing.
And the resolution number would be?
I do not have the resolution. Tyler would have that. I do not have resolutions to convene you.
I believe that's what Tyler is gathering right now. Taylor, did you have any comments on this?
Um, this is an item that I originally asked to have on our agenda quite a few months ago. The Hazen Howard family contacted me, and this is a, a small piece of property. The history goes way back when Somerset Road used to be part of the Nebraska State Highway System. And long ago, I don't have the dates in front of me, but I want to say late forties, early nineteen fifties. The state vacated these little pieces of right-of-way back to the county. And I believe it is our ability to vacate that piece of property back to the original families that owned the properties in the beginning. And so Tyler has helped the Hazen Howard family work through the process, and we are here today for the public hearing and to kind of wrap things up for you.
Tyler, did you have that resolution?
Right. That's twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven. Mr. Chairman, you ready for motion?
I am.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven vacation of the aforementioned property at the public hearing that was just closed.
Second the motion.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Hugley. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Brunt.
Aye.
Thanks, Art. Thank you.
Well, government moves slow, but it moves, doesn't it?
We're, we're hoping that this will make it easier moving forward for any of these that may come up, so.
That's for Tammy. It is nine, it is nine forty-five. We will discuss and consider the purchase of office equipment for the Lincoln County Treasurer's Office as our next agenda item.
Good morning, Chair.
What do you have for us to consider today?
Well, I believe you guys have in front of you the estimates from National Business Furniture for seven desk pedestals and seven chairs. Furniture for seven desk pedestals and seven chairs. The picture that's included is of white desks. We, however, would like to order the dark charcoal black desks. They would fit more in our office. And I do have a picture of that if you'd like to see that. I also did include an estimate from Eaks, and they have adjusted that down for us. But that, the estimate from Eaks, is for just the desks. It does not include chairs. You would still have to purchase chairs separately.
And that's for a desk similar to the one that's in the picture?
We, no, we do not have a picture of the ones from Eaks. That's just an estimate. They came and measured, give us an estimate of what it would cost them to give us a desk to what is similar there, but it is not what is in the picture.
Substantial difference.
Yes. And the Eaks did come down, I believe it's, let me see if I can find it. They did come down to 13,603.15. So they came down considerably in their estimate for those seven desks. But in our opinion, we would still like to go with the National Business Furniture.
Because the chairs are included.
And the chairs are included. And we would see, we don't know what the lead time is on the desks from Eaks. We know with National Business, we could have them here in our county within seven to 10 days. So we like that feature.
Mr. Chairman, Sherry, don't shoot me. Because I'm just a tight, crotch-deal guy with everybody. I'm not picking on you.
I know.
You just have to know me. You know, we had some concern about this a few weeks ago or a month ago. And we came in and the entire board actually went in and viewed the stuff and saw how it was. I'm going to give you my take. I can't speak on behalf of the other board members, but the chair that you have in there is very, very similar. In fact, I just bought another one for our office. So, you know, I know what they cost. I heard the comments that you made, but I only saw, I saw one chair that you weren't using, and I saw one chair that had a little something on the left deal, maybe got pushed up or something. But I didn't seem to see anything wrong with those chairs. Those chairs are just a couple of years old. To me, it's not, we're not good stewards of the taxpayers' money if we don't really look at this. And I'm really questioning the wisdom of that. I don't work in that office, and so I don't know what's best for that office. But, you know, I remember back in the 1840s, when I first came here, plus or minus a few years, we had, you know, the old gray battleship desks, you know, the old gray things, and we all remember. They lasted forever, probably are still standing. We had Battleship Lenoir on the floor, and that's it. Not suggesting we go back to that, but I guess I would question this. Desk number one, I would think that maybe just having a drawer under there or something that you would need would be nice, you know, maybe a file drawer or something, I don't know. And the appropriateness of that particular desk, looking at the rest of the courthouse is gold, because, you know, all county property, all county property is the responsibility of the board. And I just wonder if that for future people or other people to use the office and continuity within the courthouse, if that is the best design. I'll get off my soapbox, but I don't feel comfortable myself. And I do appreciate you guys going back and looking at the cost and everything. Trust me, I appreciate that. So I'd have my say.
My two cents on it, because I had the shared concerns when we went during our budget workshops and toured the office. The desks clearly need to be replaced. The multiple levels extremely, the size that are extremely low, it's not conducive for getting the work done that you guys are doing. As I'm looking at this image and you're saying that you're wanting one like this, only a different color. There's no file cabinets.
That's what the pedestal is underneath. It is a three-door file cabinet on wheels so they can, and it is lockable for their cash drawers. They can move that underneath the desk to wherever they sit. It's one of the issues we run into looking for desks, is we have three with a right arm and four with a left arm. And it's hard to find something that matches that also can be reversible to the other side.
And that's possible with this design?
Yes, these are completely reversible.
Did you, by chance, have you looked at state net bids at all for furniture or anything like that on there?
Aren't those the ones that are made of wood? I did look at Cornhusker. Cornhusker was all wood, and we did not think that wood would wear very well in the office with the amount of metal that they are using on their desks.
Through the state net program, state net bid program. I have a, I have a little bit of heartburn replacing chairs when we just bought new chairs just a couple of years ago.
Okay. The hyd, it's the hydraulics underneath that are the most concerning now, because they are, they'll be sitting in them, and they will just fall to the floor. And we have already replaced all of those parts that were under warranty.
Yes, explain to us again the reason for the chair change.
There's the arms that are breaking off on a lot of the chairs. If you'll notice, some of the girls don't even have arms on their chairs anymore because they've broken them.
When we were in there, there weren't broken off arms. It was one chair that had an arm problem.
There are some that are broken off, but we've used all the replacement parts, because the other chairs are down in the real estate office as well. But the biggest concern, I mean, we can work without arms, obviously. I mean, that's just a comfort factor. But the dropping of the hydraulics to the floor does all of a sudden.
That was a safety issue entirely caused.
Do you know how the arms are getting broken off? I mean, I've never broken an arm off in my life.
That I don't know. I do not know.
The one thing that I noticed is the nature of the work in that office is there's a lot of up and down out of those chairs. I don't spend a lot of time in my office anymore like I used to, but I would sit there for a number of hours at one time without getting up. Those ladies, those employees, it's quite different. And I understand the heartburn about the expense, but the comfort and safety of those folks that do a tremendous service to the county is, has to be weighed in as well. And I would think if that's the case, then we ought to get a different chair, Jerry. I think we ought to get a much better chair designed for what you do, for getting up and down. And I don't know what you have, but if that's the case, then I think we ought to really look at that seriously. And maybe this isn't good enough. Because when I came in and looked at the chairs, what you were saying, I didn't find. Okay, and so that's what I'm going by, is what I was told.
Sherry, I'm gonna assume that you conferred with all of the employees that work in the office, and they all had input and a say and felt like the choices made were what is best for their working areas. Also, is this amount worked into the budget for your department?
Yes, this is in our furniture budget for our department.
And it looks like you explored a couple of different options?
Yes.
And I'm just gonna say that as a customer who comes into your offices frequently, I'm gonna agree with Jerry, the up, down, the rolling in and out. We need to allow the employees to have equipment that helps them do their jobs well and safe. And so I personally support the decision to replace both the desks and the chairs. And thanks for the explanation, because I was wondering about Jaws too, just like Joe. And so it does make sense that they have movable.
It is on wheels, and it is fully movable and lockable, so.
Very good.
Sherry, you talked about utilizing the warranty on the previous purchase on the chairs. Did you have discussions with this company and Eaks about warranties on those chairs? Because obviously, the weakest link on a chair is the cylinder on, probably on most of them that you buy.
We do have four chairs we ordered at the same time we ordered these from Eaks. They have worn like iron. They are awesome chairs, but they're also close to $1,000 each.
Well, to Joe's.
Sure, that's so bad.
To Joe's point, if you get longevity, he talked about the battleship-grade S that literally are still in this building, still being used in the back offices. They're 80, 70 years old, probably. So to Joe's point.
We would love to order those chairs again for Eaks if we could. So if that's the board's recommendation, we're all for it, because one of those chairs is mine, and I love it. I'm up and down in that chair a lot, and you can't even tell it's a used chair, and it's been there for three and a half years, so.
And the cost of that chair was?
It was close to $1,000.
How many chairs are the cylinders going out on?
I would say at least five.
And there's seven total?
And there's seven total in that office. There are two down in the real estate that are just like it, but, you know, we don't need to replace them all at once.
Well, it's a disposable world. Endurable goods are a victim of that. Refrigerators, dishwashers, it's just sad, because if you get 10 years out of a washing machine, you're probably lucky.
And you pay so much for it now to get disposable.
So back to Joe's point about quality, and to Jerry's point about, it is a little bit different, because you're up and down out of that chair, you're all day long. I see some value in buying a better investment on a more quality chair, to be honest. Because if you're gonna throw away $500 on a chair in two years, you're gonna say, well, the warranty's gone, and we need to replace the chair. We didn't, we didn't do very well with our investment.
Well, I would most certainly be happy to call weeks today and get estimates on similar chairs to what we have that we know where.
And then the other thing is, you know, where Eaks did, and of course, they didn't provide you, I guess, a detail.
She just emailed me after this one was in.
But, you know, you're dealing with Wisconsin here, and the first vote you've got, and yeah, the chairs are, what, $500?
$372.67 discount price.
$372, okay. If they're similar to what you're replacing, hate to beat a dead horse, but I think Joe has a great point to.
Yep. They do seem to be, they do seem to be heavier duty. They do hold up to 400 pounds. They are wider in the base of the seat itself. So they do seem to be a little bit more heavy duty, but I am more than happy to go with the exact.
You talk about the chair that you looked at?
Yes.
You're talking about the chair from National Business Furniture that is $372.67, as opposed to?
As opposed to the ones that we have now.
So the bid from Eaks is just for desks?
It is just for desks. And their adjusted bid, again, for those desks is 13,603.15 for those seven desks.
Which is almost the grand total of the bid from National Business Furniture for seven desks, seven pedestals, and seven chairs.
Correct.
You know, the other comment I might make is, I'm wondering, I don't know if there's somewhere in the back room you could use it, but if you might order one from National and see if that works. Because if you want to go to Eaks or something, have them get a desk in, kick it, see if you like it. But if we get seven of these and find out, whoops, this is weak, length or something, then we're stuck with seven of them.
We're gonna be in the same boat that we're in now, where we just ordered a whole new suite of them.
Yeah, because this is probably new stuff, it's only a few years old, so. That would be my thought. I'm not trying to be a bad guy. I'm just trying to say, I think we need a stronger chair, and if that's a thousand bucks, I don't care how much it is. We need to have it stand up. I mean, seriously, we do. And as far as ordering, I would order local if we can. And I, but I would like to see what you're getting rather than just ordering something, because I've been, shame on me.
So do you want me to order?
I've done it before, but I've never done it twice.
One desk and chair from National and one desk and chair from Eaks and have them?
I don't really care. I don't know if you need to get one from Eaks. I mean, go down and ask what it is and kick it and have them get one in or whatever.
They don't have one in. These would be custom-built. So they'd have, that's why it's all in parts, is they would order in the parts and they would build them onsite for us.
I don't think we need to be ordering custom furniture.
Well, that's the way Eaks does their furniture, is they.
This is Motor Vehicles Department.
And the only other issue we had with Eaks was the height was only 27 inches, which is what their height is now, and the ones from National are 30.
That does make a huge difference. Anyway, my comment is, I think if you're gonna get chairs, I would recommend you get a bigger, heavier chair, and if it works for you, I would think that would be appropriate.
Maybe, my guidance would be to go back and rework your bids as far as chairs and desks, but.
And maybe you already said this, Sherry, but National Business, did they have warranty on those chairs?
I believe they do. I think it's a two-year warranty.
Sherry, I hate to sign up for this. Welcome to the club.
It's my impression, Sherry, that you guys already did kind of rework it after we came down and toured your department.
We did, yes.
Yeah. Because I know what was in your original budget was a considerable.
It was.
Larger amount than this. So we came down, we looked at what you currently had, we had discussion, and I felt, I feel like this is your rework.
Yes, I don't think that we're gonna find any better desks than the National for what the girls have a need for.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna, if I might make a motion there. I'm gonna make a motion that we authorize the Treasurer's Office to purchase the chair, the good chair, similar to what the deputy is, has for herself, and that she order it in, how many of them?
There are seven.
Seven chairs. That's my motion. Might be a second motion later, I don't know, but that's my motion.
I'll second that. And what's the dollar amount on those again?
I believe last time we checked, it was about $800, $850.
Per chair?
Per chair.
From Eaks?
Yes.
So let's say six bills, maybe.
And Joe, your motion doesn't address the desks?
It does not. It's for the heavy-duty chair only. That was my motion.
Where? Motion by Hughley, second by Weems, further discussion.
Second of the second. I'm in agreement with the second.
Any further discussion?
So can we make another motion that addresses the desks?
You can do whatever you want.
We're gonna, we're gonna take care of this motion first.
Right.
But that, that's my question as part of it. I just want, or I'll, it'll impact how I vote on this.
You can wage a motion when we're done with this one. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Hughley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Wulwer?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Brunz?
Sherry, I don't know what's gonna happen. I don't know motion-wise or anything else, but just from somebody that's been, see that lack of hair? I'll call it experience. If you order from a book or something, get one and find out what you get first, because you're pretty tight and pretty Scotch anyway, and so I've been down that road a couple times.
Well, we can certainly do that. I am.
So that's all I'm saying. Unless there's a volume discount.
You're gonna make a motion?
I get more confused as the conversation goes on. I will make a motion that we approve the Treasurer's Department using their discretion to replace the desks in their office, whether it's order one, see how you like it, and then order the other six, per the bid from National Business Furniture. I mean, do we, because there's an amount on this bid that addressed chairs and desks, and now we've changed that, just leaving the amount out?
Just did.
Okay. I will make a motion that we approve the Treasurer's Department ordering the desks.
Seven of them, seven.
Seven desks to replace the desks in their office. The total bid was $16,025.94.
So we don't know if the desks are more than 10,000?
The desks only?
11, 1119 dollars.
They are more than 10,000, well, with the pedestals.
And the pedestals are separate.
And you need the pedestal to make the desk functional?
Right.
So it would, it would be more than? It would be more than 10,000.
But I am okay with ordering one desk and one pedestal. But I am okay with ordering one desk and one pedestal to see.
So then we don't need?
Yeah.
Let's think, let's think about this just a little bit. This was quoted as a package deal. One probably is gonna cost more than what their discounted price is, would be my guess. So let's think about this. Is that the way we wanna go? My feeling is they've done a good job of researching what they need for workspace, the levels being equal. This picture depicts a fairly simple kind of a design without an awful lot of encumbrances. And it appears as though they would, for what you folks need. Uh, discounted price total would be about fifteen sixty, fifteen hundred, sixty-some dollars. Times seven is how much? I thought that's how you figured your invoice in.
There's no drawers on these desks, not even, not even a pen drawer.
Not even a pen drawer.
That's what the pedestal accomplishes though, I think, is the drawers.
The pedestal is that?
Yes.
Uh, only three, right? It has three drawers on the.
Yes, it has three drawers.
On the pedestal.
Yeah, it's eleven thousand and change, even if the discounted value is without the chair.
Chairs are fine because that's gonna be under ten thousand, but if the desk would be over one, that's a complete and full of it.
And we did get a bid from Eeks on the desk.
What, what, similar to?
Need another bid?
I, we do not know what the desks from Eeks look like.
So we don't even know what the desks look like.
No.
So even if we were approving this, the, the one that had the pedestal, the desk and the chairs, we still wouldn't have been able to because we need three bids because it's over ten thousand dollars. Thank you. Okay.
So I think you're gonna have to send Sherry back to the trial and get one more bid.
Sorry, Sherry. Well, that's gonna be hard because there's not a whole lot in stock. That's what we were running into.
State that bid.
Okay, I can do that.
So do we, uh, rescind that motion and second that? Until we get the extra information?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes, I will rescind my motion.
Okay, I'm rescinding the second.
Okay. More work, Sherry.
You know.
You know, we'll do it.
This, this is just me. Um, if there's somewhere you can see this, I don't, I don't care if she goes back and this is me, nobody else. And, and kicks it, but let's just see what we're getting, make sure it's solid, what you want, no matter where you buy it. That's all I'm saying. Is what, if we get seven of them and we're not happy, then, then we have a problem. Trust me, I'm anyway, thank you. Hope you enjoy your chairs.
Thank you very much, Joe.
So your new bid will need to be just for the desks and the pedestals.
Just for the desks, yes.
And I totally get the thirty-inch thing.
Yes.
Totally get it.
Well, right now they're sitting at twenty-seven on the high end and then it drops. The wing is twenty-five.
We're gonna have Booker Maker some little things that will screw on the bottom.
We have actually asked for that and told that they could not do that safely for us because that was our first option was to raise it and they told us they could not.
Okay.
Old Booker can't, those days? Or just not a fast, can't fasten on strong enough for him or something? Okay, thank you.
We asked Joe.
We appreciate all your work you put into this, Sherry.
Thank you so much. I'll get to your business.
Thank you.
Okay, it is ten-ten. Moving on to our ten o'clock agenda item, discuss and consider purchase of real estate located at one oh three, one oh five, one oh seven and one eleven North Dewey, North Platt, Nebraska.
You'd think, you'd think that was tough. Look how much this is. I'm just getting warmed up.
I'm getting wore out. I asked for this item to be put on the agenda. Um, a little backstory, in late July, Commissioner Woodruff and I were asked to work with, uh, District eleven Chief Probation Officer Lonnie Folker in renewing the lease agreement on the probation building. That building is, um, three thousand, one hundred and forty-one square feet. And it didn't take much conversation or time with us being in the building with Lonnie and his team to realize that probation has outgrown that facility probably long ago. And so just in an effort to learn more about leasing office space in North Platt, Nebraska, I reached out for, um, Rob and Robbie Stefka from Commercial Investment Services. And they were kind enough and spent a lot of time educating me in what the market looked like in North Platt for that. And during our conversations, it became was brought to my attention that there is a building located in downtown North Platt that consists of one oh three, one oh five, one oh seven and one eleven North Dewey Street. The building was built in nineteen fifty-nine. It has great bones, structurally sound. It has established reception areas, established clerical areas, o- offices that will suit the needs, um, for privacy and safety for our probation employees and their, um, clients. There's also a lab in the, in the building, conference rooms for conferences and training sessions and classes. The last tenant of this building was a medical entity. Um, they invested tens of thousands of dollars in updating the electrical and the data in the building. The area has much better parking than our existing location. It has modern HVAC which helps lower our utility bills. There's egress, six points total, I believe. Uh, multiple restrooms. Um, I just feel like I've made many trips through this building with, um, the Stefkas, with Lonnie. Lonnie has taken his team through the building. I've always wanted to say this, but we all know in real estate, location, 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 and this location is perfect. I feel like, um, it gives us even better separation for the adult probation services from the juvenile services, which is a requirement. Easy access for Lonnie and his team to move between the two buildings. Most of the areas are gonna require, um, fairly small renovations, flooring, paint. Uh, Lonnie's asks have been more need-based than want-based. I just feel like if you wanna have conversation about rent versus ownership, when you, when you're paying rent, you will always be paying rent. That is an expenditure that will never end and, uh, our landlords have been very generous and easy to work with and their rent increases yearly, I think, have been very conservative, but they will always go up. Rent, in my experience, never goes down. The asking price for the building, um, is two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. It not only increases, um, the square footage of the building, I want to say is six thousand, twenty-eight square feet. So that will accommodate Lonnie's current needs and allow for expansion and growth. As our county grows, it's just a, a reality that our need for, for probation will also grow. It may also allow us the opportunity, um, until Lonnie needs all of the space, potential opportunity for, um, creating a revenue stream for the county by leasing out the other office space until we need it for us or potentially moving another entity that we are required to provide offices for into this building. So, um, I'm gonna ask, uh, Lonnie and the Stefkas to come up and maybe speak to what you have discovered.
Did you write that or Lonnie?
I wrote that. That's me.
I'm kidding because.
I'm sure I, I hope I covered most of the bases.
I'd say it's worth about a two percent commission.
Well, I do know the value of having equity and ownership in the building. It's, it's something that will give back to the county almost immediately. And as far as funding the purchase, um, you know, even if this money was coming out of county funds, I have figured very generously, um, what we pay for rent, utilities, you know, removing the property tax, um, from the tax rolls, uh, closing costs. I was real generous with my figures and doing some simple math, we could reap the benefits of having this building back into our county finances in under seven years. Where we have the ability of using our ARPA funds, you know, I feel like we were tasked with spending this funding that was sent to us in a responsible manner that is, um, financially healthy for the county Treasury Department. So we currently have the money to use from the ARPA funds that would help with this expenditure. So Lonnie, if you'd like to speak to what probation does and what your needs are?
Thanks, Michaela. My name is Lonnie Folker, F O L, C H E R T. I'm the Chief Probation Officer for District eleven probation, uh, stationed here in North Platt, Lincoln County. We cover seventeen counties. North Platt is my primary office with offices in Ogallala, Lexington and McCook. This is not the first time we've had a conversation about, uh, purchasing a building. Back in two thousand and ten, eleven, when the Sheriff's Department built the new jail, our building was tore down and, uh, we had to find a new, new location. So I worked with Willis Brothmeyer, who was the Commissioner at that time, looking for a space for our offices. He found the space across the street where we're currently located and I house juvenile and some adult probationers there. North Platt was selected for a reporting center. Uh, that brought the Evans Building into play in two thousand and thirteen. We had to start out with a lease on that building, uh, because there was an opportunity to purchase that at the time. The timing wasn't good for the county. Uh, it was decided that we just go ahead and lease that building. We've moved twice within that building to get bigger locations. We were on the second floor of that building, initially started out on the south end where we were really cramped and confined. Uh, then Russ Jones moved his office. We were able to get that side. And then Tanya Folk, who had the Community Domestic Violence Program, that was an opportunity for us to get that space. So we now occupy from the north, uh, side of the building, about three-quarters away down that second floor. There is still available space at the end that we initially started out in that was really broke up. Wasn't very conducive for doing business at all or having receptionists there. So it's an interesting position I'm in. I'm here talking, uh, because I was asked to come talk. Usually it's because, uh, as Joe likes to say, unfunded mandates and I'm here begging. Uh, so it's a little different scenario. So I, I'm happy that I have the opportunity to discuss this with, uh, the Commissioners. As Michaela said, uh, we do need more office space. I have staff that are double, doubling up in offices. And we would get somebody from probation that comes over from the court. Uh, we can't utilize that office because we have two people. I have to find that, a place for them to either meet with the person or move one staff somewhere else so we can do our intake investigations, whatever we need to do with that particular person coming over from county or district court. It also presents a confidentiality issue. When we're talking about substance abuse evaluations, things like that, it has to be a confidential area. You can't have Robbie sitting next to me as I'm talking about that unless there's a release sign. So that presents an issue with the location we're currently at. The new location would free us up and we could utilize all the space. I know there's other obligations for the county, but currently the way it sits, the way the staff I have, we could utilize all the space and have room to grow, which this gives the county a five, ten, fifteen, twenty-year plan for probation. And with problem-solving courts, the way they're expanding, we currently have a problem-solving court in Lincoln County that does specifically with substance abuse issues and one in Dawson County. But I could see that court expanding into maybe, uh, for an example, domestic violence court or a veterans' court, something like that. And I see that happening within the next five years. Uh, I feel very confident about that. With the population growing in Lincoln County, new businesses coming in, just with the population growth, there is reason to believe that we may have more folks on probation. Uh, I can give you examples of other locations in my, uh, district where we've had an increase in population and our, our population on probation grew, uh, with that new industry. The classrooms in the current Evans Building are small. We have, we can run about ten folks in each classroom. The building, uh, the Dewey Street building would give us an opportunity to run fifteen in two smaller classrooms and up to twenty, twenty-five in a larger classroom. We do a lot of different classes, anger management, parenting classes, victim impact classes, uh, things that some probation officers facilitate the classes. And we actually contract out for folks to come into the reporting center and do those classes. As Michaela said, I currently have some adult staff in my juvenile office. Best case scenario is I would separate the adult population from the juvenile population, have all my adult investigation officers, assistant probation officers, drug techs over in the Dewey Building and no adult staff where we'd be dealing with juveniles and their parents. So I would have that free at my waiting room. It'd give me another option as far as drug testing, where we do drug test juveniles and adults. I could do it in two separate locations. I could do more drug testing, uh, if needed. And the biggest thing I talked about was the expansion, uh, potential expansion and get officers into their individual offices instead of having them doubled up. So I did some math, and that's not my strong suit, but from September first of two thousand and thirteen to October first, twenty twenty-two, we spent about two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and two dollars in, um, lease and rent. Like Michaela said, Petersons have been a very good landlord for us, good to work with. And it was the best case scenario at the time, so we took advantage of the Evans Building for our needs. Uh, just briefly, we supervise about two hundred and sixty-five adults on probation here in Lincoln County. For an adult to be on probation, it costs the taxpayers two thousand, five hundred dollars per year. If they're an adult, high-risk, we do assessments. If they have high-risk, high-needs, it costs about three thousand, five hundred dollars to the taxpayers to have somebody on high-risk, uh, probation. Problem-solving courts, which I talked about earlier, we have a problem-solving court here. For an individual being a problem-solving court for the taxpayers is four thousand dollars per year. And if we put somebody in the penitentiary for one year from Lincoln County, it costs the taxpayers forty-one thousand per year to have that person in the Nebraska Department of Corrections. So we do about six thousand drug tests a year through probation. Uh, you know, we're, our business worked through the pandemic. We didn't shut down. So we're first responders, so we had to stay, uh, this is probably not the best way to put this, but crime didn't stop. The court didn't stop, so we continue to supervise folks in Lincoln County and all the other counties during the COVID pandemic. I have toured the building two or three times and I agree with Michaela. I, I didn't like paying rent when I paid rent. So I think we get equity in a building and it'll serve the needs of Lincoln County, the judicial branch, who in this district uses probation quite often and, and does a really good, really good job of utilizing the staff that I have. So if you guys have any questions or Michaela have any questions for me, but that's kind of my take on it. The building would serve our needs, give us a chance to grow and I'd be able to run more classes out of that location.
Good job, Lonnie.
Thanks, Gary.
I've heard, I've heard, I've heard this and I do understand your needs. It is cramp over there. It's a bad. over there. It's a bad situation. You can't, really can't function in a confidential fashion, as you point out, that you need to be with a lot of these cases. And it is, we do need to do something. My heartburn with this, and the rest of them already know this, you know this, is that we have to eat this expense, the county, meaning the county. And it's kind of thrust upon us. And so I want to do it the most probable way we can as well. So this isn't really a question for Lonnie, but what was, what was our lease expense, 36 a year?
Thirty-seven.
Okay.
And change.
Okay.
Thirty-seven, six ninety-two, and that will go up every year.
So in seven years, it's just a little over a quarter of a million dollars.
Yes.
Is what we're paying today.
Yes.
That's what we've paid out so far.
I would not, I would not support this probably just on principle if we didn't have ARPA funds that otherwise are, well, my first reaction was to send it back to them. But it's, it's kind of like the farm program. It's, it's moved the market, so to speak. So if you don't participate, we're not doing justice to the local tax base because it's inflated values of everything, pricing wise, purchasing, rolling stock in real estate. Because ARPA has the latitude to do this, I, I would in principle support that. With, I think I figured 7,000 we're losing a year of tax revenue for the building.
Sixty.
Robbie would know that number maybe right off the top of his head.
Six thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars in property taxes.
And that's for all three addresses combined?
Yes.
So I do see the value there as well. This is also a concern that I, I don't have a lot of heartburn about buying the building because I think there is a good payback, good value there for savings. And we, like it or not, you are probably going to have to expand. And we're going to be compelled to find office space for you. We don't have a choice in this, really. Are you comfortable with the building as is, that you can function for the, in the near future?
Well, I've talked to my staff about that, Kit. And without incriminating myself as far as what we're, where we're at now, it would be a better situation for doing our business because we're cramped where we're at. So I guess to answer your question, yes. We could make it work. There are some issues with lighting in the building. You know, the, there's some issues because it was a dental office in some areas of the building. It would probably have to have some plumbing either cut off at the level with the floor and that, because we can't walk around and walk over that stuff. That'd be a safety thing. But I think getting that taken out of the floor. But as is, you know, the first time we talked about this, you asked me if you'd give me the keys today, could I go? Well, I wouldn't want to, but it would be a better situation for my staff. And I have my staff, I always put them first, whether it's with the commissioners or the judges. So that's kind of where I'm at with it.
Sure. I just wanted a candid answer.
Yeah.
Moving into any building that's maybe functional but not new, that's to be expected. There's going to be some modifications.
And with the only exception is one office I have not seen. And I think it's like 1970s and it's been stuck in the 1970s for some time. But I have not seen that office. That may need some work as well.
I think it's safe to say that through our conversations that we have had about renovations after the purchase of the building, Lonnie is very conservative. That comes through in our conversations on what he would want to do and, and has offered to do a lot of the, you know, things that are necessary with, with his staff. But I, I do think we all know that when you make a real estate purchase, the time to do your upgrades and renovations is while the building is empty. And, and I feel like, you know, the asking price is $43 a square foot. We're not going to find that anywhere else, I don't believe. And it, and it is reasonable because the seller knew that there would be some investment that would need to be made in the building. Some of those investments are for safety reasons, you know, a few better internal doors. And, and the rest, paint and flooring, which is a pretty small note. And, and then updating the bathrooms to ADA compliant is something that would be necessary, something we can't get away from. And bathrooms are always a pretty big expense. So even, you know, we've had conversation, we've, we've run some figures through on the renovation costs. And even with that taken into consideration, I still feel like this is a great investment for the county where this is an entity that we are required to provide. And down the road, it'll be less expense for the county if we make this move now, while we have the funds available from ARPA and, and the ability to buy this building. It's not going to be on the market forever.
Robbie, to the point of the condition of the building, as, as I, your firm has been a longtime manager of this. Do you see any glaring issues with the functionality of the building, infrastructure, condition of the roof, anything that would?
There, there aren't any, what we're going to call large hindrances, right? I mean, you know, in, in commercial real estate, yep, rough, you know, the mechanical systems, the electrical systems, everything's been checked out. And to Michaela's point, you know, she said the bones are good, right? I mean, this, this building was well constructed. And it's, it's been used, you know, for, by, by one tenant for quite a long time who outgrew this space, right? Too. So, I mean, it wasn't by necessarily choice because it wasn't functional. It was just.
Not because of roof leak or the furnaces didn't work or something of that nature?
Or be queen or rock in a hard spot with the unfunded mandate for housing. So the question is, how do we do this in the most cost-effective way for the taxpayers? Presented with the unique opportunity of the ARPA funds. Maybe purchasing this building does make financial sense.
I, I very much believe that that's the case. I'm pretty committed to this being a good, long-term investment for the county. Probation can use this office for, as Jerry said, decades and, and decades. And I, I just feel like this is a good investment for our whole community.
Mr. Chairman?
I would, I would agree wholeheartedly. And it's unfortunate that we have these unfunded mandates, but government's here to help us spend money.
Spend money.
But I support this purchase and I support Lonnie's work. I appreciate the efforts and the help that the Stephkas have been to us in this process. Commissioner Ruler needs a tremendous pat on the back for all of the legwork that she has done in this regard. I'm 100% behind purchase of this particular facility.
Sounds like the beginning of a motion.
I, I would like, Joe, you've been really quiet. That makes me nervous.
I hate to be thinking about that.
I mean, as.
Jerry's saying, don't, don't leave him alone.
As, as an architect, and you've been through the building, I would like your input.
I think you said it best when you said the bones are sound. I would somewhat disagree when you talked about modern HVAC, but I believe that is.
Comparatively.
I think that it's probably worth the price.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Tyler, just to clarify, this can be purchased through ARPA funds?
With ARPA funds or?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Go ahead, Jerry. Sorry.
You ready?
I am ready.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that Lincoln County purchases the real estate located at 103, 105, 107, 111 North Dewey, North Platt, Nebraska.
Second.
Motion by Woodruff, second by Ruler. Any further discussion on this? In the amount?
$259,000, correct, Robbie?
Yes.
Thank you.
With the, can I ask another question on the motion? With the specific language that it will be purchased through the ARPA funds available? Support your motion? Or we're just simply going to say we're going to buy it and then figure out how?
Let's, let's just leave those out. That way we can utilize the ARPA funds for capital. We got to make sure that it impacts the levy in the best possible way.
I agree.
So if it means.
If it comes out of ARPA, it's not going to impact the levy.
Shifting funds from something that does impact the levy and use of ARPA for that. I want to give full latitude to Becky and the treasurer to, I'm okay if you want to use it.
Our motion stands.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing non-rule call vote, please.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Ruler?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Weems?
No.
Brunz?
Aye.
Thank you, Rob and Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lonnie.
Yeah, yeah.
Robbie?
Yeah, thank you.
Rob?
Thank you.
Tammy, do you have your go to a stand?
I do.
What is the process here now for purchasing?
The board given authorization to purchase it. So I would say, what are you, what are you, you, you?
I can't.
On ARPA or not?
Do we need, that lease agreement, is that what we need? Oh, that's the other one. Don't mind. I'm on a different topic.
Do I need this back?
Yeah.
Do I need this back?
No, we're moving on to this next.
Okay.
All right, moving on to our.
Sorry.
10:15.
Next, next time.
Moving on to our 10:15 agenda item, bit behind schedule. Discuss and consider entering into a 99-year lease agreement with the North Platt Chamber Development Corporation for property located in the northeast quarter of Section 28, Township 14 North, range 32 West of the 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska, commonly known as the Greenbrier property. This is something that we have been working on for quite some time. I invite Gary Pearson, president and CEO of the North Platt Chamber Development Corporation, up for any questions that may be.
Good morning, Gary.
Levy to hell.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Gary.
So this is, this is something, as my colleagues well know, has been in the works for, for quite some time, working to utilize that property as best as possible for the long-term development plans of the industrial rail park and what we envision as an inland port authority. Gary has worked very diligently with the board of directors for the North Platt Chamber Development Corporation and their legal counsel, right alongside me and Deputy County Attorney Tyler Wilkmer, to get this lease agreement drafted and make sure that it legally makes sense and provides us a really good partnership moving forward to utilize the Greenbrier property, which we donated the $4.75 million of ARPA funds to the chamber in order to purchase. I think Gary would, would agree with me that that is the linchpin parcel for the overall development because it does contain the spur. And having anybody else move in that may be adverse to larger development could prove troublesome moving forward for, for our plans for Lincoln County's growth, future growth. As my colleagues will see in the agreement that's been drafted, there is a pretty good purchase option in place that allows us some flexibility to exercise both in the short term, should we get approval from the Director of Department of Economic Development, once we hopefully attain inland port authority status, one of the five in the state, but also should that not be granted, that approval be granted in a future period, we can exercise that for a fairly nominal amount. So Gary, I'll let you have the floor.
Okay. Well, thank you. And I really appreciate commissioners and the work that Tyler's done in addition to this partnership that has emerged with Rail Park. It's a, it's a real exciting time for, for Lincoln County. We've had a, say, a very pleasing amount of interest from companies that have heard about the Rail Park. We're working with some active prospects as we speak. The fact that we do now have the ownership of the Greenbrier facility certainly opened the door. In fact, Union Pacific Railroad reached out to me and said they occasionally have prospects for transloading and we may be able, may be able to, to make that facility a revenue-producing facility much quicker than what we thought. While we're going through the inland port authority process, that application opens a week from today. And so we want to make sure we have all our documents ready to roll. We're pretty experienced at that process, having gone through the Rail Park process. And I'd like to get together with Commissioner Brunz and Tyler later this week to make sure we're all on the same page. So when that opens up, we can get right after it and get the application in as quickly as we can. It is, in addition to being first come, first served, as far as being able to be reviewed, there is a more merit base into it than what the Rail Park application had. So I think this is a wonderful partnership, great opportunity. I do have the authorization from my board of directors to sign the agreement today. So in fact, I brought the key along. So we did take possession of the key the day that we actually had the, kind of the ceremony, the governor's visitation and really nice crowd and a great way to kind of kick things off. As you've seen evidence, the state of Nebraska is totally on board on this. And they've been a great partner and they're, they're excited about it as well. In fact, I have conference calls three, three days this week with different companies that are looking at the potential rail parks. So it's just very encouraging and really is something that, as we've discussed many times before, it, it opens up an opportunity we haven't had in Lincoln County for 75 years with rail access. And so it's time to get on with it, right?
Yep. Tyler, this, this document, Section 2, basically just reaffirms our ability to purchase as we originally had, purchase that back.
Correct.
And so we won't be encumbered by the lease itself, the opportunity it provides us to purchase. We can go ahead and do what we were originally going to do.
Correct. The way that Bill and I have drafted the purchase option, the lease, is that while we're, while we're in the transformation period, while the state has to okay the sale, we can only exercise the purchase option if we get the go-ahead from the Director of DED. The idea there was to protect the chamber from DED clawing back those state match dollars.
Correct.
If at some point we no longer have to ask the director's permission, either because we exhausted all the funding, the program goes under.
we exhausted all the funding, the program goes under, they have tacitly given it, or we get to thirteen years after this all gets started, then we can exercise it at our discretion and it's a dollar.
Okay, thank you.
And I do wanna point out for the Board that even though the, the purchase amount in the option and the annual lease payment are fairly nominal, this is a real lease. There is a way that the Chamber can terminate it and take the property. So I drafted that, Bill and I drafted it that way for a myriad of reasons, but it needs to be a real lease. And so if we don't carry insurance, if we don't pay our annual rent payment... There's another one. Oh, if we assign the lease without first getting them written notice. We don't have to get their permission, but we do have to provide them a month's notice. Those are all things that can trigger a default. There's still a thirty-day window to cure a default. If you don't cure it within thirty days, they have the option to terminate the lease. So it is a real lease.
What would be the liability insurance amount?
Just have to have... Well, the amount, I don't know. I have already talked to Tanner Patera about ensuring that we can get commercial liability on this premises, ensuring that that was no problem. It would be the same terms that cover the rest of our properties. The Chamber's only requiring that we have some sort of liability insurance essentially to protect them.
And the Chamber has insurance on the building itself?
According to interim timeline, yes, we do.
Any other questions for Gary?
No, I just appreciate all the work that you've done, Tyler and Gary. Bill?
Ready for motion?
I am.
Chairman, I would move to enter into a lease, ninety-nine year lease agreement with the North Platte Chamber Development Corporation for property located in the northeast quarter of Section twenty-eight, Township fourteen north, range thirty-two west of the six P M, Lincoln County, Nebraska, commonly known as Greenbrier.
Motion by Weems?
Second.
Second by Hughley. Further discussion? Hearing none. Rule call vote, please.
Weems?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Ruler?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Thanks, Chairman.
You did that on purpose, didn't you?
Pretty good cat-like reflexes you have there.
Assume all liability.
This is the tenth, correct?
Yes, ten, ten.
We didn't discover America, but we discovered the partnership, right?
And it, it, it's been a great partnership. This is very exciting for Lincoln County.
Say you went four and a half million dollars, looks like.
That's a mighty small key for a big building like that.
Yes.
It's the only one.
It's the only one they could find.
Al's walking soon.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Gary, would you give this to me?
Fantastic.
Thank you, too.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate the partnership very much.
Thank you, Gary.
You've been wonderful to work with and Jill, I won't squeeze too hard.
Thank you.
Well, and by the way, good fortune on your future endeavors, your conference calls this week and...
Yes, everything's really... Everybody's being pretty patient. They understand that's the process. Actually, I meet with the Superior Village Board tomorrow night. They will have a resolution support for the application process.
I need to chat with you on that after the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, moving on to our next agenda item, which is somewhat related. Discuss and consider a resolution creating the inland port authority. Now, this is on the agenda. We did pass a resolution a few weeks ago, basically creating an inland port authority, but there have been some changes to the application rules and this resolution cleans all that up and it adds the requisite information that is needed. Essentially, what you all have before you is our application that will be submitted to the Department of Economic Development in its entirety. And it does increase the size of the inland port just a little bit because the rule change allows for some land of the inland port district to be non-contiguous. We have some purchase option on lands. We did go ahead and include that. It had some language changes that Tyler may be able to speak to just a little bit. But ultimately, I'd like to also make a point to say that to Brent Berklin with P C Engineering, who worked very hard on the shape files, the G I S shape files with me, to ensure that everything is professionally presented for our application process. I'd like to thank Bonnie Edwards, our county surveyor, for the work that she put in in getting the accurate meets and bounds descriptions and survey of the land and everybody else that's been involved in this. So Tyler, did you have anything else to add?
The Exhibit A, the economic impact study that goes to the state will not have draft final report on it. I have the one that just says final report. So I got tacked on there because that's what I had Friday when I sent it out. So...
Okay. That's the resolution number?
Twenty-eight, twenty-two, twenty-eight.
Mr. Chairman? The application is due a week from today, is that correct?
October seventeenth is at nine A M. is when the application window opens. As Gary mentioned in the last agenda item, it is quasi-first come, first serve. We've got everything buttoned up. We're gonna be working with Cassie Condon and her thirty million-dollar fingers to help us in this endeavor, getting that submitted through Amplafund. That's the electronic application submission program that the state uses for this grant process.
And when do we expect to have a answer on this? And understanding that on some of the other things, the drop dead day to hear yes or no was delayed and delayed and delayed. So do we have an idea of when we will know about approval or not approval?
Final rule states that from the date of application, they have ninety days to get us an answer, thumbs up or thumbs down. So...
So that's the first deadline?
Early January, at the latest.
Just so the five of you are aware, if you didn't gather from the resolution, if they grant the inland port to the county, the entity that you are setting up is gonna be its own beast. You don't control it. You do not. The five of you through the chairman get to pick who the board members are, but then you set that animal free.
With the exception of cutting its head off, that's the only thing we can do.
You always have the, you brought it into this world, you can take it out. But that is...
Nine-member board, if I read correctly.
Nine-member board. The entire point of the statutory scheme is that board functions independent of the other government agencies and political subdivisions in the county. It is its own deal.
As it should be.
Just wanna make sure the board's aware of that.
That's the spirit and intent of the legislation so that entities that come into the overall development, they don't have to wade through the various political subdivisions that can be cumbersome to development.
And the personalities that could get in or object to him.
But for checks, we do have the appointment authority for that inland port authority and we do control the facility with the spur, which is...
We can't set...
One additional little...
Yes. So the inland port authority as its own entity will be able to contract in its own name and releases in its own name, purchase property in its own name. So yes, it will, if it wants to work out of the Greenbrier facility, it will have a lease with the county.
Tyler, the boundaries, I guess, of the inland port, okay? The property that's in it right now will be owned by...
No.
Owned by private entities that own it now. The, should purchase options be one-hundred percent exercised, that would be the North Platte Area Chamber and Development Corporation. It is area farmers. Ownership remains ownership of the property.
Okay, so that, that's what...
They have authority over the jurisdictional, jurisdictional boundaries that we have set forth in this resolution.
Right. And in working earlier on that, Gary, you know, we've talked maybe about one time coming down further this way, is, are these boundaries down the road, can they be changed somewhat?
Yes.
That's, that's my question right there.
This, this board can add to the boundaries.
Thank you.
And we can shrink the boundaries to a minimum of three hundred days.
That's right. Thank you.
But no less.
But right now, it's at three ninety-nine?
Correct.
Having worked in the transportation industry for over thirty years, I have witnessed a port authority in action. But for the people here who don't know what a port authority does, an inland port authority, can you give us a brief explanation?
Sure. So an inland port authority, when you think about coastal ports where container ships come in to, to dock and offload their, their containers off of container ships, they typically go through customs inspections right there at that location and then that, those goods are then moved to facilities really throughout the country, but primarily within that immediate geographical area. Most of our ports nationally are landlocked. They're, they're congested. They're extremely built up in population. Inland ports are a tool that can be utilized to take the container off of ship, offload it onto a train without breaking chain of custody, bring it to an inland location where a port is established and they can go through customs inspections at that, at that location and then get dispersed to facilities, whether they be factories or manufacturing plants, what have you, offloaded through transloading facilities and put on trucks and taken anywhere in the country. But our unique geographical location here with I eighty, Highway eighty-three, we have a freight airport and we have billions of dollars of rail infrastructure, makes us kind of a nexus for transmodal facility such as an inland port. And so that's what we're establishing to create here, should the state give us that designation, one of the five, and it will absolutely help us market Lincoln County to potential investment from economic development opportunities and help us grow our communities well into the future for generations. So...
And just like our hopes for the rest of the rail park, the inland port authority will generate quality jobs for many Lincoln County residents and help this area of the country with our supply chain issues as far as bringing products in, getting them processed locally and moving them back out. Is that a fair statement?
And the thing that, to, to that point, what's really exciting is it allows for our area producers to gain significant market access.
It works both ways.
It works both ways.
What's coming in and what we can send out.
Exactly. And we are, I'm already having conversations with our, our federal delegation, Senator Fisher and Congressman Smith, who serve on the requisite committees in both their legislative bodies. And priming the pump, should we be designated an inland port, we're, we're hammering out what that application process looks like to create a free trade zone, which really puts the development of, of the overall industrial rail park and puts it on steroids. So exciting times at our community.
With that said, while we were up here thanking everybody, thank you, Chris. I know that you've put a lot of time and effort and research and energy into this for the county and I feel like without you and Gary working together, Tyler, this wouldn't be happening. So thank you.
I echo those comments. Thank you for your work.
Colleagues of mine, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we pass the resolution and you sign Resolution twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-eight, creating an inland port authority in Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Motion by Ruler?
Second.
Second by Hughley. Any further discussion?
We all sign.
We all sign.
We all sign. Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion. Rule call vote, please.
Ruler?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Becky, we will need to get this all certified. Once we get the final Exhibit A from Tyler, it all has to be certified prior to submission. So... Okay, I don't believe we have a need for a closed session today. Moving on to our last agenda item, hear concerns from elected officials, department heads or the representatives. And I will also open it up to members of the public. I believe we may have somebody in the audience that wanted to address the board. I will leave this agenda item open as we finish signing the rest of the papers.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Morning, Brian. Morning.
Um, I was in...
State your name and sign it.
I'm Brian Bledgen.
Sign in for the record, too, please.
I was in here three, four months ago about my road. I was just wondering where that's coming along. The last few rains we had were pretty heavy. I had to go in and dig the side of the road out so it would drain because you couldn't get down it without a four-wheel drive. I mean, it's, it's getting really bad.
Have you spoken to the superintendent about it, Brian?
Not yet, I haven't.
Brian, can you refresh my memory? Where are you living at?
It's on Walls Road.
It's just south of the Garfield table.
Yeah. And I noticed that they...
We're out again?
South of the Garfield oil, Garfield Oil, east of eighty-three. Four Mile, Brian?
Yeah, something like that.
Something like that. And then back south?
Yeah. And I noticed, oh, a couple of weeks ago or maybe longer than that, from the Garfield table to my mailbox, I noticed they put some gravel on the road and stuff. And I was just wondering, you know, when they're gonna start on my road because...
You obviously haven't, you haven't met our new superintendent yet.
No, I haven't.
Yeah. This is your, this is gonna be your opportunity to do so. Because he makes a habit of attending our meetings now to see if we need anything from him and vice versa. So that would be my suggestion, first step is let's get you two together and see if we can solve your problem here. I, I know what you're talking about with the lack of a ditch there.
Yeah, the road's deeper than the ditch. I mean, there's nowhere for the water to go.
The, the great thing is, is our new highway superintendent is extremely responsive and, uh, very amicable to listening to concerns of people here in Lincoln County.
But he's not infallible, though.
He's not, not, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but what I'm saying is, your first, first, uh, discussion absolutely should be with Brian, to have him out there to take a look at the situation.
How about Jason?
Or Jason, sorry, and get Brian out there to look at the situation.
There you go. I knew you had a progressive going.
My mind's moving faster than my mouth.
Actually, that's very, very desirable, and some part of the county has to have that lower, it actually holds the moisture well down in there, so when you get a dry season, you don't get a lot of blow on this stuff.
While, while the stuff is getting deep behind the table here.
Yeah, yeah.
Here's my contact information, I'm on the Roads Committee, and I will say, talking to Jason is probably gonna get you the most action, he's been very responsive, and we've had a lot of positive feedback about the road construction crew that Jason developed and operates for the county, so I'm sure they'll be up and...
Yeah, because there's, I mean, there's a couple spots in there, I had to go in with a tractor and push the side of the road out so it would drain, because it was, it, like I said, you can't get down it without a four-wheel drive.
His walls are through, farm to market?
Not to where he's, where Brian is, but, um...
Walls, Rex, Rex is for it.
No, I'm, I'm saying that, what I'm saying, let's not, let's not promise too much about getting right there and all we do until we find out kind of where it is and what it is.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, Brian, so to speak, was at the end of the road down there, so that's...
And I've, I've talked to all my neighbors and they want something done with it, too, because it's, like I said, a mess.
Yeah, yeah, I've been on it, it's like this.
Yeah.
So, I, I hope for good results, Jason, so.
Your, your concerns are noted, we'll let, uh, you speak with Brian and...
All right.
Just have this Jason and let Jason, Jason work with Brian to...
All right.
There's also a Brian that works at the Road Department, we'll just make it easy and let the two Brian's...
That's where my mind is going, when I'm saying Brian, I'm thinking Brian glossed with the roads construction.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Or Brian, or, or, no, it's Jason, thanks.
Stop it.
Devil made me do it.
Well, I got chastised for picking on him earlier, now you're good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Linda Ecker, I live, uh, south of Hershey on Oregon Trail Road.
Okay.
And my question is, how do we go about trying to get that, it's a gravel road, is there any way to go about trying to lower the speed limit on there? I assume it's 50 since it's not a marked road, and at least until the east end of the lake, because I'm, it's the road right next to the interstate lake out there, and at least until they get to the east end of the lake, there are state trucks that go down that road and they barrel down that road, I have called and complained, some of my neighbors have called and complained, because with it being a gravel road, it's dangerous, there's so many houses along there, there's a lot of kids that live along there, kids and grandkids for the different people, and last week we had a whole bunch of grain trucks flying down that road, and, so I even called the sheriff's office last week and asked them if they, because they looked like they were exceeding 50 miles an hour, I don't know, because I didn't have any way to, you know, test their speed, but, that just seems like until they, at least until they get to the east end of the lake, is there a way to lower the speed limit, post a speed limit sign and stuff, just to...
Study.
Yeah, there'd have to be a study done, uh, for changing any kinds of, of speed limits, um, we utilize the state highway, um, regulations when it comes to our speed limits on, on county roads. What we can do is, I'll, I'll have a conversation with the sheriff and maybe get somebody out there, uh, to do a little bit of clocking and patrol the road.
And they do sit occasionally down at the end of the road, right by the Hershey Dickens Road, right by the stop sign there, but, get about halfway down the lake where our house is at, and they just go barreling down there, you know, they're not going that fast because they're stopping or they're just turning on, but, once they get about halfway down that road, they just go way too fast for the, I'm just scared there's gonna be a bad accident, there's some of the houses along there have a lot of trees right up, you know, to their, to the edge there, pretty close, and you just about have to, I'm sure they, we don't have that issue, but I'm sure a lot of them probably have a hard time even seeing until they get almost to the road, and I'm just scared there's gonna be a bad accident, a little kid go running out there, they ride four-wheelers and stuff out there, little kids do, and, just worried about somebody getting hurt, but...
They, they don't actually ride it on the road, though, do they, the kids?
No, they'll, like, pull up on the road to go to the neighbor's house, stuff like that, but just, I've seen some kids with bikes and stuff out there, too, and, it's mostly during the day, but the other day I called because it was time for school to be getting out, and I just worry because the school bus goes down there, and there's a lot more kids around at that time, and so that's why I called the sheriff's office, I just said, if, have somebody that could go down there and just, kinda, it'd be better if they parked a little farther down the road, because they keep their speed going pretty good.
They did bring somebody, they did send somebody out?
I don't know if they did or not, I didn't see anybody go by, so they may have sat down at the west end of the road there, and just as a, they might have slowed down just because they saw that. The state has been very good when I've called them, when they have some of their trucks go flying down there, they've apparently told their guys, because then I could see them maybe going 25, 30 miles an hour, and that was, so they have had their people slow down different times, I haven't had, complained to them this summer, but...
Are they hauling out of any of the pits down further to the east, or do you know?
What's that?
Are they hauling out of any of the pits down further to the east or anything?
I don't know for sure.
You're gonna, you're gonna get the sheriff on it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak with the sheriff.
Okay, I'd appreciate that, I just...
I appreciate you bringing your concerns to us. Not much we can do, um, as far as the speed limit at this point, um...
Tyler could tell you more about this than any of us probably, but there is a, there's a procedure with the rules and regs on speed limits on county roads, and part of that is, I'm pretty sure, is a study to, traffic study to see, get some of the information necessary to...
Okay.
Modify that, and Tyler, do you have any...
It's no simplification, if you're gonna start putting up signs to change how traffic is controlled in the absence of signs, you're gonna have to name it back and out, that's the problem with traffic, so, I would assume if enforcement of the current, and speed limit came into effect, I would...
Right, so I'll have that conversation with the sheriff.
Okay.
See if we can get it addressed...
All right.
As simply as possible.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. So, John, on this, so this is just for the cost that they can collect any other way, so we just eat it, is that basically?
Basically.
Basically it?
Actually, these are, these are all, for example, um, you know, it's, and donuts, why some of these changed, because they all used to see where they all have different things? I don't know why, so, I can't tell you if it's the class, you know, because they always, they can, for 12 years, or they can, so, no, I mean, sometimes they started changing, so I don't know why.
So it says, it says state versus?
Well, we are the state.
So we are the state.
On state statutes, because we don't enforce usually county or, you know, what happens, but that too, so although we may, you know, we have city ordinance or something like that, we always put on a state statute.
Oh, that makes sense, okay, thank you.
Notice, it hasn't changed, the very first one at the top always used to be a change in retirement. And that, that's not that old, I mean, it's less than 10 years old, because, um, they weren't being funded, uh, by the state, so they...
It's still coming up, I forgot about this.
They're making part of core costs, well, if, if people pay it, but when, people don't pay the freaking core cost, we pay it.
Yeah. In my vision, people don't pay, I was gonna say, that's probably more than normal than than not.
I haven't, I, I can check, I will check.
Happy on Naco's website, you saw schedule program.
Yeah.
They just overhauled our website, did you notice that?
I haven't been on, no.
I tried to get on it, and a couple times it said, "The page not found," and I thought, "Oh, well, they got hacked," but, they took it down to rework it, I guess, is that what they did, Becky?
Naco?
Yeah, their website?
I think they tried this, I mean, they updated it, tried to make it more friendly, I think.
It should direct you to the new one.
Is it not?
Yeah, it does now.
It does, yeah.
But just for a couple, three bills, at least three days, it was down, made me wonder if they'd gotten hacked or something. They just reworked the, the front page.
Somebody decided in her infinite wisdom that nine was a good number.
Did you just ask them something? Oh, thank you.
She's sneaky like that. Is it all local people, or is it people from just local? I was looking at some other boards for other port authorities in other states, and they all had a pretty healthy mix of agriculture, um, development, finance.
Who gets appointed and how the, uh, what represents the county is up on this board? And, and how it's willing, um, how they regulate themselves internally?
Is that clear?
So the, the silent on what are upper paint position, I would assume, until such facilities can either stay operating, not that much work to do.
Right. And I thought it says tire. I'm gonna quit complaining about my husband's tractor tire was on our farm equipment, well, or not. Now he wants to put up another building to park all of his stuff in.
Things I don't care about, they go on and on and on about the paragraphs, the things I do care about, well...
Very vague and...
I find they're paying by order. You can't dazzle them with your brilliance, that's what might be a bullshit.
I'm pretty sure I used to have a T-shirt that said that, Jerry. I would like to commend your, your wife on her, uh, reasonable paint expense for her office, did, did you see that come through? It was under $60?
No.
She is conservative.
But actually, I had two quarts of old paint, I could, I was offered to give her for trim paint, she didn't take it.
It was fluorescent orange?
How did you know?
Because you're, you're kind of a fluorescent orange kind of guy.
Traffic cone orange, huh?
I like to call it hetero.
Becky, at some point this week, we're going to need to, um, establish an account for Lincoln County with Amplifund. Yeah, I know, uh, Cassie Condon is a wizard at it, so she's going to, I'm gonna work with her to get that done.
Amplifund?
Amplifund.
Hopefully it's working now.
Um, yeah, right, we just need it working on the 17th.
That's the chance for, depending on the use.
Yeah.
There, the state's requiring that to be the exclusive system for funds requests. I know, right?
When does that go into effect? When does that go into effect?
Uh, for exclusive?
Yeah, because I was gonna say, I still get paid from three different state agencies and keeps going into my bank account.
I mean, them paying other people is not...
Oh, it's the other way around.
Right. It's...
It's all for all the reporting, too, it wasn't Grant Vantage, now they've switched to Amplifund, the last I knew it was not working. You think that's, well, I don't know, we never know.
Those little skinny ones tend to stick to the other one in front of it. I am going to assume, Tyler, maybe you can direct me here, that nothing else can happen until all the documents and the paperwork and the purchase is made, or can we start, like, having bids on flooring and wall, wall repair and that kind of thing?
Get bids on anything you want, whatever you want.
Okay, would it be advisable that we continue, since we're kind of on a time limit, moving forward with that? I know, I can't believe it's October, the middle of October practically.
Wait, wait, we talk about this building over here?
Yes, okay, yeah.
Help me if, did I miss something? We bought it, but it's not how we, we bought, that's all we've done.
That's all we've done so far, but...
With you.
It's all we could do.
Yes.
Got you, oh, I, I'm on the same page.
Are you protesting by not signing these?
I am, actually, I actually, actually read that one and didn't sign it.
That happens to me frequently. Because he's the bird.
Because there's years of precedent.
There you go, look there, there's precedent.
Have they had that meeting yet, that we got an email?
That's this.
Oh, October nineteenth, is any, is anybody gonna go to that?
I don't know, I gotta wait and see what-
Yeah, I know.
Schedule's all about.
My schedule does not allow me.
The front page is about the meeting, the rest of it's just information that they ask that you keep these books.
So that is it?
One more.
Becky, did you have anything?
I was just gonna tell all of you, on that Wildlife Service contract, we paid a claim in July, which was for the previous quarter, so I'm assuming we'll have one more billing through the end of September.
Saying it's gonna call me in three days, or she did, you never called me.
Is Jerry still working in the field, doing his stuff, or no?
Is who?
Jerry Johnson.
I reached out to, uh, Jerry Feist and asked him a couple of things. First of all, he's gonna be doing independent contracting, and then I also said, and by the way, is Barry, is Barry still part of the USDA program? When he replied, he said, uh, yes, yes to both, essentially. That he, but he would be back in touch with me, he'd give me a call in two or three days, he was swamped with it. Getting things set up and his phone and his email and stuff, because he lost all that. But he said that yes, Barry was still involved, but I don't know if he's doing things on his own, and I didn't call Barry. Because-
See you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
And, uh-
Thanks, Brian!
Say hi to Brian.
And-
What?
Because-
Thank you.
Because Jerry assured me he'd be back to me in two or three days, I didn't call Barry Johnson to see what, you know, get his take on it, so. I'm not sure where we're at, I'll be honest with you.
So their office in the federal building is still open, or are they closing it?
I don't know, he was a one-man band, other than his field operative.
Yeah.
That was, that was his little domain up there. So, I'll call him again today, past dream. Find out where we're at. Yeah, I was, he didn't answer the phone, he didn't answer my email, I thought, well, maybe I sent the email to a bogus email address or something.
Were you in an expression that they were gonna fill in his spot or his spot or just be in?
He said, he said in that communication that it was no intention, to his understanding, to replace it. Basically, we're just gonna abolish the job.
And so, basically, we, we ought to have some pretty good correspondence in with Colorado, maybe Colorado's friends or somewhere, shouldn't we? They ought to probably be calling up, right?
Fort Collins.
Fort Collins, yeah. I'd say we should have the contract null and void.
Well, we have, we-
I would agree.
We paid him in subsequent.
July, but that was for through the end of June, so, it's ended September thirtieth, versus-
So they'll be sending us a bill?
I would guess.
We won't pay it, will we?
Well, we probably will, that would be-
The services have already been rendered.
But the ones after that, I would think, yeah, that's-
It'll be interesting to see if they've closed the office down. Will they send us another bill? Maybe not.
Becky, I like, that invoice that you pulled, is there, is there contact information on it?
See Kent Weems.
Yes, there is.
Okay, I wanna, I'll stop down and get a copy of it from your office. And then I'll chase down, uh, Jerry. And I'll call that office too.
Be nice if they would give clients a heads up on what they were thinking.
Let them know that you are our official prairie dog commissioner, that, uh, that affects you, right? Yeah, exactly, and let, since you don't, since we don't have a coordinator here, the contract is null and void.
Agreed.
We take the money ourselves and-
Well, I would-
borrow your- Let's maybe let me look at that. Well, don't get in a muddy up-
I wondered how long you were gonna let that go before you-
Some probing questions on whether or not they plan to staff it, re-staff, or how they, how they-
It's the federal government with the intent that they have to do something wrong.
I know.
Okay. Anything else for good of the cause?
We can, uh, well, maybe we should stick Tyler on the Fort Collins office.
Hope not.
Kill two birds with one stone. Okay, so, I'll stop and get that.
All right.